And we're live.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is three thirty and the meeting is on call to order a truce in good for the role.
Fisty Burgo here, Fisty Cook, Fisty Gray, Fisty Johnson, Fisty Young, Fisty Lazio, Fisty LeManion, Fisty Fandolfi here, Fisty Stapp, Fisty Thevis.
Yes.
Fisty Wilson, Fisty Wyckoff. Just a second. I need to make sure we have a form here. That we do not. We're trusting Young. We do not have a form. Coach, is there anyone else online?
No, Teresa, there is. There are no board members online right now.
But we do not have a thing. Do we need one more?
There's not loading items.
Okay. So we can discuss the information. We just can't hold on.
So we can proceed as a non-voting session and still receive the materials. So this over to our executives.
All right. Well, this is the time of year where the library goes over the post-budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And before we do that, I just want to acknowledge all the hard work senior leadership team and staff done in putting this budget together. Without them, today would not be possible. So our agenda for the day, we'll provide an overview of the budget and give more specific details on the general fund and other significant operating funds. And when we conclude that, we'll be asking for your feedback and we'll talk about next steps through the rest of the budgeting process. Could we go forward a little bit? All right. Before we get into the post-budgets, I want to take a moment to talk about the progress we've made over the past year. Progress that positions us for a strong and sustainable future. First, we've taken meaningful steps towards a new headquarters facility guided by criteria developed by BNIM. We've begun the search for a site that will support the library's growing operational needs, increase efficiencies, and inform our work in new and exciting ways. It is important to note that the hardworking staff here at headquarters have sustained or supported continued growth in our circulation. So as you all know, last year we circulated roughly ten point two million items, and this year I'm happy to report that we're on track to exceeding that number. And again, as many as you know, we've made investment in our finance team and the software that supports that work, and we've made a lot of progress in that area as well. I think you'll see more new and exciting things in the coming year once we migrate to our new financing accounting system. Another accomplishment is last year, we mentioned the Midwest Unology Center, and we've completed a strategic plan that charts that forward for expanded digital services. We've worked with a consultant on this and we were we received the final product of a strategic plan for this digitization department. We finalized job description for the new manager and we'll begin a search for that candidate in the coming weeks. This will lay the groundwork for a new level of preservation, access, and innovation. We also remain committed to caring for our branch libraries throughout the system. We've done a lot of work maintaining these properties, but in the coming year, Jeremy will explain. We have some exciting capital maintenance projects that are being planned. The most notable of which would be the MGC roof and ongoing improvements across the system at our parking lots and HVAC systems. These investments help ensure our spaces remain welcoming, safe, and positioned for long-term use. We're also proud to deepen our commitment to under-resourced communities. This coming year, we'll invest in areas identified staff through our empowerment grant initiative, which is something that I've touched on in previous meetings, but we'll share more in the coming months. This initiative is one in which we we outlined areas of need within our system, many of which you're all aware of Farview, Marlboro, inactive space in North Independence and the others, oh, world branch libraries. And so we proposed this problem to staff and we said, we'd like you to get together and recommendations on how we can make investments that would support these communities. And I'm happy to report that we received these proposals back. Senior leadership is in the process of developing a set of criteria to evaluate these proposals. But from what we can see right now, they're very sound and hopefully we'll be able to bring some of these to life. And there's money allocated for these investments. So stay tuned on that. As it relates to staff, in response to the increase in CPI and minimum wage, we adjusted our wage structure by approximately one percent. These changes are part of our broader strategy to remain competitive and supportive employer and to recognize the essential role our staff play every day. We're also making significant investment in programming, both to meet demand and to explore new ways of engaging our community with meaningful and mission-aligned experiences. Finally, this coming year, we will hold our first system-wide staff development day. And it's my understanding that the last time this organization did a staff development day was in twenty nineteen, if I'm not mistaken. But time and time again, when we go out and we engage with staff, they say that this is one thing that they would like to experience. Gives them the opportunity to network with each other and to learn from the experiences of outside experts and staff alike. So this event reflects our belief in continuous learning and shared purpose. It's a chance for our entire system to come together, renew our sense of connection and grow together. So as of right now, in an ideal scenario, we would hold this all-system-wide staff development day in the early spring. If that's not possible, we'll push it out a little bit to the fall to avoid conflict with all the activity during summer, summer months. These accomplishments and others you'll hear about in the presentation are all part of building the next chapter of Mid-Continent Public Library. So with the budget that you're about to learn more about, you'll see that we're continuing to lay the foundation for what comes next. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy, who is going to give us an overview of our budget proposal for this year. Look forward to hearing your thoughts. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Aaron. Excuse me. We'll start here at the budget summary slide. The budget for the upcoming fiscal year has revenues of eighty-two point one one million and expenses of eighty-six point eight four million. You'll see in a few more slides when we look at the fund, the budget by fund, the difference between revenue and expenses is fund balance that will be planned out of a capital fund. We want to talk a little bit about the highlights in the budget that Aaron alluded to. This recommended budget provides funding for staffing, materials, and operating expenses for all thirty-four branch locations and our enhancement centers, as well as our headquarters operations. This year's recommended budget also provides funding for the pre-construction expenses that Aaron mentioned for the new headquarters facility, as well as continued funding for the digitization projects and other capital needs at MGC, the capital maintenance plan that began this year, and continued funding of our compensation plan, as well as the targeted projects that Aaron mentioned for under-resourced communities. So before we look at the budget by fund, I thought it'd be good to look at the property tax, which is our primary revenue source. So if you want to slip to the next slide. This is the library's assessed valuation, our actual assessed valuation from fiscal year twenty eighteen, nineteen through twenty-three, twenty-four, and then a projection for twenty-four, twenty-five, our current fiscal year, and a estimate for twenty-five, twenty-six. So the assessed valuation that we're projecting for the upcoming budget year is about a five percent increase over the current year. And we're basing that on the preliminary Jackson County estimates that were given that we used to establish the non-binding tax levy in March. You'll note that as the assessed valuation goes up, that the levy rate actually goes down. And that's the due to the Hancock Amendment. The Hancock Amendment requires that as property values increase, revenues must be capped at the lesser of the actual growth in revenue. The Consumer Price Index or five percent, whatever is the lowest of those three indices. The Consumer Price Index for the current fiscal year is two point nine percent, and so that is the amount that we use for the budget. The next slide. This slide looks just at the property taxes. You'll see that the actual amount of revenue collected from twenty eighteen, nineteen fiscal year through twenty-three, twenty-four from the audit. And then we have a projection for twenty-four, twenty-five based on our budget and collections year-to-date, and then our estimate for next year based on the two point nine percent growth rate that we're anticipating. You want to move to the next slide? We shared this slide. Last year, we updated it slightly. Last year, I think we looked at a hypothetical home value within our district, I think at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. But for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, I actually went out and got the median home value for all three counties and then use that to average what it would be for the county. And so that value is two hundred and sixty-six thousand. So if that value or the hypothetical home within our district had a value of two hundred and sixty-six thousand and that home had the fully realized valuation adjustment by year that the district saw, that home in twenty-twenty-five would be worth thirty-three percent more or three hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. That home in twenty-twenty-one would have paid the library a hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And if the board approves the levy rate for this year, that home would pay two hundred and seven dollars and nine cents, which is about eighteen percent more or three point six percent per year. When I move to the next slide. So this is the budget by fund. All of the governmental funds are listed together, and then we also have our internal service fund where we record all the expenditures and revenues for health insurance. And so there's the total revenue, eighty-two point one one million, the total expenses, eighty-six point eight four million. And get back here. So you'll see here is where the fund balance is essentially being spent in the budget in the capital fund. So this is a summary. On board docs, we actually have a full breakdown by fund going into further detail on revenues and expenditures for each fund for anyone who would like to look at that detail. It is also on our website now under the financial reports section. I'm going to move to the next slide. We'll look just at the general fund. And we'll start here comparing the last fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, with our projection for the current fiscal year, and then the budget recommendation for next fiscal year. So revenues to the general fund in the last audited fiscal year were sixty-two point six, six million dollars. As you can see, they're primarily through the property tax. And our projection for the current fiscal year is sixty-seven point six, seven million dollars or about eight percent higher. This is predominantly because of property tax levy being restored in the current fiscal year. However, we've also seen increases in E-rate reimbursements and passport revenues. Our recommended budget for next fiscal year is sixty-eight point eight eight million, which is about two percent higher than our projection for the current fiscal year. And again, the majority of that is based on our projection that property taxes will increase two point nine percent next year. Going down to the expenditure side, our expenditures in the last fiscal year were fifty-nine point five, six million dollars. Our projection for the current fiscal year is sixty-one point zero four million. The majority of that six percent increase is due to salaries and benefits and increases in operational expenses. Our projection for salary is about eight percent more than the prior year as wages, retirement, and health insurance all increased over the prior year. We're projecting materials to be about two percent less than the prior year. This has more to do with the timing of payments when payments are made versus actual service reductions to the system. And programming is about a fifteen percent increase when compared to the prior year. And going back and looking at programming expenses throughout the year, it's clear that the the books that we bought for the summer reading program had increased about fifteen percent more than they had in the prior year. And as we get into the budget, you'll see we anticipate materials costing even more in the upcoming fiscal year than we're experiencing now due to, you know, inflationary pressures. And then lastly, looking at several different line items within the operating budget, technology, other contractual services, professional services, building maintenance and insurance. Overall, operations are about eight percent higher than they are in the prior year. Most of that increase is attributed to those special projects that we put in this year's budget for technology, such as improvements that you've seen in this room here, replacing the automatic checkout machines at all of the various branches and some professional services that we had in this year's budget, primarily to look at headquarters, all feasibility studies around that, as well as a strategic plan initiative update in the current year. So when you look at our budgeted expenditures of sixty-four point six, one million, they are about six percent higher than the projected expenditures in our current fiscal year. Again, this is predominantly due to salaries and benefit increases and then operational expenses increasing due to those cost increases that we spoke about a little earlier. So the upcoming budget of just over forty million dollars is about four percent more than our current projection. Some of that is the wages for our current pay plan. Others are the antswipe benefit costs tied to those such as pension and taxes. Our materials budget is going up about two percent over the current year. And as I just mentioned, a lot of that is due to increasing demand and rising costs for the electronic materials that we provide throughout the district. Programming is about thirteen percent more than the current year. Again, a lot of this is due to cost increases, not just for the books, but all of the various elements that are bought throughout programming. And then finally, operations is about fifteen percent more than the current year. And some of the significant increases to operations are in vehicle operations, other contractual services, conferences, training, and travel, and building maintenance. And spend just a little time on the those line items specifically. In the current year, we don't have any vehicles being replaced. In the next year, we have two vehicles to be replacing. That accounts to about a hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase. Other contractual services are same with two hundred and eleven thousand total. Eighty-six thousand of that are increased costs for building, cleaning, pest control, lawn care and snow removal. Remaining hundred and twenty-five thousand are for safety expenses such as the fire alarm maintenance, fire alarm monitoring, video surveillance systems, and replacement of cameras and access card systems as needed. The next line item I mentioned was the conference training and travel. This is increasing around two hundred and eleven thousand as well. This is primarily due to a conference that takes place every other year, the Public Library Association Conference. And as Aaron mentioned, adding in an all-staff development day to the budget. And then the last item to mention under operations is building maintenance, which is increasing around eight hundred thousand dollars, primarily for non-capital maintenance items that have been requested throughout the thirty-four locations. And lastly, we're recommending moving two million dollars from the general fund to the capital fund to continue funding the capital maintenance plan that began in our current budget. With those transfers, in addition to our projected expenses, we project that there'll be around two point two seven million dollars remaining from the projected revenue at the end of the year. That would leave a fund balance in the general fund of thirty-eight point seven, three million, which sounds like a lot. But as you recall from last year, we really need to break down what that balance is if you want to flip to the next slide. So the majority of this balance is really cash that is collected in a prior year and used in a future year because our tax year and our fiscal year do not align. Our fiscal year is July first, June thirtieth. However, our taxes are predominantly collected in December, January, and February. What that means is the library has to keep that money in our savings account and use it for operating expenses from the end of February all the way to the next December. So when the fiscal year ends and we take a snapshot of our bank account on June thirtieth, we have this rather large cash balance that we're actually going to spend from July one through the end of November. Just looking at the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four audit, that balance was thirty-five point three, four million. And I went back and looked at how much of that cash we spent from July first through November thirtieth, and it was about twenty-five point four million. So that left about nine point nine million of actual reserve. However, even in that nine point nine million, some of that was earmarked. We had one point five million earmarked for a transfer to the capital fund. We had two point two million earmarked as a reserve for employee vacation, sick leave, other payouts. And then this miscellaneous is payments that are made in a prior year, but they'll be recorded in a future year, prepayments of about a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So when all those things are peeled back, what's left is about six million dollars of true operating cash in the general fund, which based on the operating expenses for that year equated to about thirty-eight days of operations. So an operating reserve is necessary so there's funds to draw on for emergencies or to explore innovative technologies and other opportunities that may arise in the middle of a budget year. Those unknown and unanticipated expenses are why we need reserves. An organization of our size with the majority of our revenue coming from a property tax should target having around sixty days of operating cash, operating expenses, excuse me, on hand. And so this is a good start to have thirty-eight days. But what you'll see in this budget, what we'll propose in future budgets is that we continue to grow that reserve so that we have an adequate reserve for operations into the future. However, as you all recall, even with this reserve, we had to borrow about seven million dollars to address cash flow concerns between September and November of this fiscal year. We do believe the cash position is getting a little better, but we will still need to borrow money this fiscal year. And so we've also programmed in insurance expenses on those borrowed hours into our general fund operating budget. So for this fiscal year, which ends on June thirtieth, we're projecting to have thirty-six, thirty-six point four, six million dollars. We're anticipating that we'll need twenty-seven point five, three million of that to do the same coverage of operations from July first to November thirtieth. Excuse me. And then if we left all of the other reserves to say, and we would have roughly six point five, five million dollars, which would equate to about thirty-nine days of operations. So probably the same as our current year. And then if this budget goes through the way we anticipate with revenues and expenditures, we would anticipate at June thirty, twenty-twenty-six, finishing the year with thirty-eight point seven, three million, needing twenty-six point nine two of that for the operating or for the cash reserve, leaving about nine point four million for that operating reserve, which is about fifty-three days of operations. So we're getting closer to that sixty-day goal. This next slide, hopefully we'll illustrate that a little better. So this yellow line is the average expenses by month for the library for the last five years. And this blue line is the average revenue by month for the last five years. As you can see, our revenue exceeds expenditures in December, January, and February. But then this gap here is the cash we need from the end of the fiscal year to the tax. And then this is the cash that's left over from the end of the tax, not the end of the tax year, but the the end of the bulk of the tax year until the end of our fiscal year. And so that's why it's critical for us to carry such a large cash reserve year over year. There has been some discussion at the state. We believe there's some movement. You all may have the opportunity to adjust our fiscal year to better align with the tax year in the future. And for that to occur, then you wouldn't see that large cash balance sitting at the on our balance sheet at the end of each fiscal year. Shut up. There we go. Flip to the next slide. Continuing the theme from last year's budget, we want to highlight the investment in people to make our library excellent. Just so that we're all speaking the same language, you'll see on this slide, we talked about full-time equivalent. And this is calculated by dividing the total hours of all employees, full-time, part-time, seasonal, et cetera, by two thousand eighty hours, which is a standard full-time employee hourly or hour amount to get a a factor of how much full-time equivalent we would have. So we may have nine hundred employees total, but some work ten hours a week, some work twenty hours a week, et cetera. We take all those hours divided by two thousand eighty. In twenty nineteen, the library had five hundred and seventy-two full-time equivalent positions. And we were operating twenty-nine branches that were open because a few were closed for renovations. Look to the next slide, looking at the budget here of twenty-twenty-five. All thirty-four locations are open, mission enhancements are running, and we have five hundred and forty-eight point five, eight full-time equivalents. So the library continues to make adjustments within the the structure, either at headquarters or the branches internally. We're not adding staff, but we're simply realigning where they go. And and that's that's worked for a while. But as we mentioned last year, I think it airs repeating that we're really reaching a breaking point where it's very difficult to reassign staff and not have it impact some other area of the operations. So long term, the library needs to be cognizant of the fact that in order to maintain thirty-four branches, all of these various factors, we may need to look at adding staff as the library continues to expand into other areas. Move to the next slide. This slide was shared with the Personnel Committee. I think it's good information. So we just want to make sure that everyone has it here as well. The projected salaries of the authorized positions is twenty-four point two million of the budget. In addition to that, a planned fourth quarter pay increase of a hundred and eighty thousand. And then we're projecting our savings, if you will, from turnover and unfilled positions of around six hundred thousand. So the total for full-time benefits eligible employees is twenty-three point seven, eight million, which is just about three point four percent over the current year. In terms of part-time, we have three different categories. The branch associates, the pages, and the delivery hours. All those total just over five million dollars, which is about twelve point four percent over the prior year. Flip to the next slide. So this is a comparison of the last completed fiscal year, our projection for this year, and then the budget for next year in just a line item detail that we referred to earlier. Flip to the next slide. Next area of the budget we'd like to focus on, places. Flip to the next slide. So we brought this up last year, but again, thought of bear repeating. For purposes of the library, we're considering three different types of capital and/or For purposes of the library, we're considering three different types of, uh, capital and/or maintenance. Um, anything that's under a hundred thousand dollars is being expensed at the general fund. Uh, was the eight hundred thousand that I mentioned in aggregate for the thirty-four branches, those were routine maintenance items and will be adding essentially to the assets, uh, but they help maintain what we currently have. Then we have two separate categories for capital. One is replacement, anything we currently own that costs a hundred thousand dollars. This could be roofs, elevators, parking lots, et cetera. Uh, that will be, uh, reported and captured in the capital fund. And then any capital addition, so any item over a hundred thousand dollars that adds a new asset. You know, if we were to add a second reading rocket or, uh, headquarters project, things of that nature, things that are new to the library that we don't currently have, that would be that for our category. Flip to the next one. So this is our ten-year pay-as-you-go recommended capital replacement plan. Kind of hard to read on the slide, I apologize. A lot easier to read on the attachment, it's on board docs. Um, but this is our, our plan, uh, by year and then our plan by branch. And, uh, as we mentioned last year, um, several of our branches, uh, got a significant, um, enhancement during the capital plan, thus they're not included yet, but as we continue to add a year, we'll continue to add branches, et cetera, till four, five, six, seven years from now, when all branches will be listed. Um, and so what this plan, um, is showing is the two million dollars that I mentioned, uh, previously being transferred from the general fund, uh, to the capital fund as well as the, uh, money that was transferred this year being available for projects. And, um, so with that, we, uh, moved up funding for the MGC, uh, and we moved up funding for, uh, Antioch, I believe. But what I wanted to show here is that it's not a dollar-for-dollar, we're preserving dollars into the future for those other branches that aren't yet in the plan. Uh, so this plan, as you see at the end of, um, fiscal year, thirty-four, thirty-five, would have just about eight million dollars available for the capital projects that are going to go into thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, et cetera. So, um, we don't want to show, you know, the entire amount of the capital reserve we'd spent in ten years because we know we have more buildings. We're obviously going to be open longer than ten years. That's showing the adequate reserve, uh, helping us guide into the future when we add more branches and facilities. If you flip to the next slide, this is honing in now just on the current fiscal year budget recommendation. Um, across the top are the types of projects that we're doing, and then on the side here are the branches, uh, that are in the plan, the ones that are being impacted in the next fiscal year, uh, are highlighted here. So we have, uh, just over a million dollars for HVAC, air conditioning, heating, ventilation. We have about one point five million for roofing. We have, uh, just over eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in parking lot improvements. And then by branch, the Antioch branch have a parking lot of just over seven hundred and forty thousand. Blue Ridge would have the HVAC system at just over a million dollars. Excelsior Springs has a, a roof project, seven hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, MGC has a roofing project at six hundred and seventy-five thousand. And South Independence has a parking lot project at, uh, just over a hundred thousand. So that's a little bit more detail, uh, into the planned capital maintenance projects for next fiscal year. Next slide. This slide's really just a representation, um, as Aaron mentioned in his comments, uh, you know, our staff have been working with consultants to locate suitable properties for the future, future headquarters project. This is simply a rendering of what it could potentially look like, um, on, uh, any given site, given the, uh, search criteria that our, uh, consultants are working with and what's currently available in the marketplace. Of course, we'll come back to you all as we have those sites, uh, determined. But this was really just a rendering to show you what a potential site could look like. The last slide in, uh, the places segment is just looking at the, uh, significant investment that the library makes to the places, to facilities, uh, whether it be the, uh, the leased space, uh, Red Bridge, uh, or the cleaning services at all of the, uh, locations, including headquarters, snow removal, lawn care, security, utilities, building maintenance, uh, and then not to be left out, but the transfer from the general fund to the capital fund for capital maintenance into the future. Uh, in the last completed fiscal year, we had, uh, invested four point seven million dollars in our places. This current fiscal year, we're projecting a little, uh, under eleven million dollars, a significant increase, uh, and in the recommended budget, eight point six million dollars, showing that continued, um, commitment to ensure that places are, um, as best as it can for our patrons. Go ahead and flip to the next slide. So, uh, just have a few more slides here. Uh, we're going to look just fund by fund. This will be a little bit of a, a recap of what we've just talked about, to the, it's the capital project fund. Uh, but revenues into the capital project fund, uh, we anticipate around eight hundred thousand dollars based on cash availability, um, and where the market is. We have the two million dollars being transferred into the general fund, um, and then our projected expenditures is two million dollars for the headquarters. This is what was discussed at the, um, March eighteenth meeting. Again, that project is not anywhere near, uh, completion. Some of this money will be needed for design and study, uh, to continue, but the majority of this money, uh, really won't get spent until we have a site located, uh, and begin design work. And then the capital maintenance plan that I just mentioned, a little over three million dollars of the seven million dollars set aside for capital maintenance has been earmarked for projects. Uh, remaining balance is available for any other, excuse me, emergency that may arise, uh, if needed. If it's not needed, it simply stays in this fund and be available in future years for future projects. Look to the next slide. This is our grant and gift fund. Um, this is special revenue fund for the library, meaning it's not a tax-supported fund. Uh, the majority of the revenue, uh, that we're projecting for the next fiscal year is coming from the Kaufman Foundation as well as the state of Missouri, uh, for specific grants, uh, or projects, uh, as well as the, uh, expenditures. And we have more detail on this, uh, in the fund breakout, uh, on board docs. Move on to the next slide is our debt service fund. This is property tax funded. The library is, uh, anticipating moving, uh, just about six point eight million dollars of property tax to cover the current, uh, debt, uh, principal and interest payment on the twenty eighteen debt and also holding money in reserve, uh, for potential future debt issuance, should you all approve of that for the, uh, HQ project. This next slide is a look at the, uh, current funding, uh, for the debt service. You'll note that, uh, the twenty eighteen certificate of participation has an early payoff in, uh, June of twenty twenty-six. Um, we're currently working with our financial advisors, uh, to determine if taking that early payoff would be financially advisable to board. Early, uh, early projections look like it will be, uh, so if that's the case, we'll be coming back to you before the end of the calendar year, not fiscal year, um, to talk about restructuring of that debt with a new issuance that would save the library money over time, uh, interest. Um, if the interest rates were to change or, you know, something else in the economy changes such that, uh, it's not advantageous to pay off early, we'll, we'll let you know that as well. The last slide that I have is on, uh, the last fund, excuse me, is the internal service fund. This is our health insurance fund. Um, we're showing revenues from the library of just under four point six million. Uh, revenues from employees, retirees and other people, uh, that pay into the plan of seven hundred and twenty thousand. So revenues, uh, in the fund of five point three million. Uh, we've got our expenditures projected, uh, the administration of plan, our stock loss insurance premium and then projected claims of, uh, just over five point three. So almost a break even here. Uh, if this were to occur, uh, as we anticipate, we would end the year with, uh, one point four million, which is in between our, um, minimum net position of one point two million and our maximum net position of two point three million. Uh, so this fund is, uh, in pretty good financial shape as it stands right now based on the current economy. Believe the last slide I have is the budget calendar, uh, just a reminder of sort of, you know, how the library's budget process goes. In March, we set the non-binding levy, uh, the technology committee, personnel committee and building committee all met and discussed, uh, factions of the budget. Here today presenting the budget and, uh, later on in this, uh, in the board meeting, we'll ask for the public hearing to be set for, uh, June twelfth. The finance committee will also meet that day to, uh, make a final recommendation on the budget to the board for the board's June seventeenth meeting, at which point this budget will be, uh, on the agenda for, uh, recommended. In addition to that, uh, we just have a little footnote down here at the bottom that, uh, the tax levy actually doesn't occur until a little later in the year. So, um, in, in August, when we get the final certified values from the, for accountings, uh, we'll bring that back to you all for final levy adoption that will occur, uh, in September. With that, I think I've gone through all of my slides, so, um, I'll turn it back over to Aaron at this point. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions and take any other feedback that you all would like to give us.
Thank you, Jeremy. Um, that's a lot to take in, but, uh, I'll just, just to you guys, if there's any questions or comments, need for clarification on any areas.
Well, I just want to, um, can I tell you what, how, mission we need here, but, um, you know, I really appreciate that you break, you breaking it down to, um, how much per household? You know, I don't think I ever saw that number, how much per household? You know, an average family was paying, so I appreciate that. And all the work behind it was, yeah, amazing. Thank you. I think I, I, it just helped me to really understand it. Some of your graphs I just thought were, um, maybe easier for me to understand as a non, you know, spreadsheet type of person, so thank you.
Second map. Anyone else?
I think you said it well, there's a lot to take in, so it's just a lot of thanking you. I too appreciate. Excellent presentation. There are also no exceptions.
Particularly appreciate your explanation of the whole why we have so much reserves because a lot of people kind of look at that and numbers of why do you need, because you got so much left out, but it's really reserved for what we need to live on, um, for a while. So thank you. That was very wonderful.
Just asking, maybe I missed a bit. So Jeremy, is there a certain percentage that you're looking for? You, you just listed a number of days, and I know when we, I was with the city, we looked at it as like a certain percentage of total budget. How do you come to that determination of reserve?
I mean, whether you call it percentage or days, um, I mean, it's simply the same thing, right? We're looking at sixty days out of a, the year that's three hundred and sixty-five days, so, um, to me, I think it's a little easier for people to grasp, you know, if you take what we actually spent last year and divide it by three sixty-five, that's how much it cost us to operate per day. Not exactly, but you know, for context. Um, and so based on that, then we say, okay, well, if we take how much we have and divide it by that number, how many days can we survive before we run out of money? And I, you know, the property tax routine, instring, uh, volatile, it's not subject to market, uh, fluctuations. It does, of course, change slightly, um, but, you know, even during COVID, the library collected ninety-five percent of the revenue that the library thought it was going to collect. Uh, I can tell you as a person who worked for an organization that was heavily dependent on sales tax, it was not anywhere near that. So organizations that have, uh, a more, uh, volatile revenue mix would, would need to have a larger reserve because they have more at stake. Uh, since the majority of our revenue, especially to the general fund, comes from a very reliable source, sixty days seems prudent, uh, to me. Of course, once we get there, ultimately you all can decide whether you think that's enough, whether you'd like to see us, uh, you know, and there's other types of reserves. An operating reserve is simply for emergencies or for things that come up, uh, that we didn't anticipate, you know? You all could set a different type of reserve where, um, you know, off the top of my head, but just there's other things that we could start reserving money for, uh, that would help rainy days, uh, that will eventually come. They come every, you know, so often in any given, uh, fiscal climate. Uh, so whether times are really great or times are really bad, there's always either brighter or rough days, uh, coming. So, uh, I, you know, for an organization of this size with a, uh, or, uh, general fund, um, I believe sixty days is a prudent reserve, a prudent target. It at least, I believe, gives you a place to start your conversation from. What we got to get there first.
On the other side of that, while we still have consistently supposed to recommend, yeah, this is about ability to generate new men, new equipment if needed. So that's another reason why reserve is so much needed because it runs out. We don't have a lot of avenues to go legally, organizationally.
All right. Again, thank you for all the work you put into this. And just as a quick reminder, uh, the personnel budget accounts for roughly sixty percent of this budget, uh, our operating budget, um, and Jennifer and gave a wonderful presentation to the personnel committee. If you care to view it online, I think I've sent everyone the link there, and, uh, we will in turn send out the link to this presentation to the full board in case they want to, um, see it in its entirety. So, uh, thank you.
Our general also calls for, uh, other businesses, if there are any other businesses to come before this meeting. Any, you know, any? I, I don't have a general question, actually, not to put Jim on the spot, but I believe Emily was trying to answer a lot, yes, let's see if there could be an adjustment to coincide the fiscal year with the calendar.
Yeah, that actually passed, um, it passed the Senate and the House. Um, the governor has not signed it yet, um, but should. Yeah, so we should have an opportunity next, within the next, next year, especially to be able to look at an alteration.
Okay, you know, the business to come before this meeting, uh, is there a motion of re-charge?